Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to squeeze one minute out of the clock there and go ahead and begin our December 16th meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and take this opportunity to welcome everyone here. As is our custom, we will begin our meeting with the invocation led by Commissioner Helms.
Thank you. If you care to join me in that. Dear only Father, we have so many things to be grateful for. Help that you lead us to a cohesive understanding of our jobs as working for the best interests of Union County. We have so many things to be blessed, we're blessed about. Thank you for those who are here today with their recognition with utilities and lead them on their day-to-day chores. Please guide us and direct us, help us to make the best possible decisions that we can make. Help create unity that we can work together in a cohesive fashion. Thank you for the first responders, the fire EMS, our law enforcement, and our military. Keep them safe in all they do as they protect us. In thy name we pray.
Amen.
.....................................................................
We start our meeting with several recognitions. Our annual operations challenge, pipe tapping and hydrant hysteria contest through public work. So, Mr. Manager, is there someone on staff that's going to lead that discussion?
Mr. Andy Neff. How are you this afternoon?
Very good. How are you, sir?
Good. I believe you have a report for us.
I do indeed. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Manager. This afternoon, we're here to honor a number of our employees who successfully completed a number of challenges and competition at the most recent North Carolina American Waterworks Water Environment Association Conference. This conference takes place from November 4th through 6th and offers a number of operational-oriented challenges during the conference event. Our teams competed very well this year as they normally do. What I'd like to do at this point is bring up the pipe tapping team who won second place. The coach was Ethan Griffin. It consisted of Jake Penigar, Zachary Winget, and Jared Broome. So if I could have them come forward, please?
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ethan, yeah. So I'd like to present this trophy that they earned at the conference for finishing second place in the pipe tapping competition. This competition involves taking a tapping machine, penetrating a ductile iron pipe, and then inserting a copper surface line to it and making sure that it doesn't leak. This is done under time, and these gentlemen completed all the tasks in 2.53 minutes, 2 minutes and 53 seconds. So they did a phenomenal job doing it. So I want to congratulate you all on a job well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we had a unique event at the conference for an event called Hydrant Hysteria, and we had both the men's and women's team compete in this. This was the first type of event in a number of years at the conference, and we had two women coached by Nick Neutrano, Beth Belk, and Michelle McCarver. If you would come up, please. They did this event very successfully. They practiced for several weeks leading up to the event. We were very happy that we had women who wanted to compete in this event because it demonstrates that regardless of gender, that people can do this type of work. So I want to present the second-place trophy for Hydrant Hysteria to Beth Belk and Michelle with their coach, Nick Neutrano. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to, I'd like to just explain what this event entails. Basically, what these women had to do was you have a hydrant assembly that's disassembled. So you have the barrel, you have the internal mechanisms of the hydrant, the bolts. They have to lay everything out the way they want to, and then it's timed. These women did this event in 2 minutes and 15 seconds. It's their fastest time. And they had to actually lift the barrel up, put it on the stand, on the base of the fire hydrant, and then put the cap on the fire hydrant, and then put all the bolts in, get everything tightened up, and then the hydrant was charged, and it had to be leak-free at that point. So in order to do this, it's a very interesting event to watch because one person has to go one way and the other person has to be almost on the opposite side of the hydrant to keep working around the hydrant to get all the bolts put in place to beat the time, to get a good time. So to watch these women do this was just a phenomenal experience personally. So I was very grateful for that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we had the men's team, and that consisted of Coach Nick Neutrano also, Richard Baker, and Justin Hunley. So they could come up. So we have this trophy for you gentlemen, second place in Hydrant Hysteria. Good job.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Great. Justin is on vacation, so he couldn't be here today. But again, same event, same procedure for the men to do the hydrant assembly and make sure that it's plumb and leak-free when they're done. These gentlemen did this event in 1 minute and 39 seconds, put a hydrant together. So that's pretty phenomenal. So again, thank you. Next, we have our operations challenge event, and this is a fairly involved event where there's five different pieces to this particular competition. So I'd like to have the team come up. So that'll consist of Hayden Hunter, who's the team captain, Aaron Winnens, Paul Walther, Jonathan Jordan, and the coach is Matt Hargit. So if you guys could come up. These gentlemen, through these five events, achieved first place in the conference. So it's a remarkable, remarkable event. So Hayden, I guess I'll give you the cup here. And then, so we have this, and this, these two. So I'll explain a little bit about how this competition goes. These five events consist of a collections challenge event, which is wastewater collections. So in that event, they basically have to repair a damaged PVC sewer pipe, and then they have to make a tap into a four-inch sewer lateral using an insert A T, and that's timed. They do another event called the maintenance event where they have to diagnose and repair a pump that is out of service. So they actually have to lift this pump out of a wet well, move it to an area where they can examine it. Prior to all this, they have to do a successful lockout-tagout. So they have to terminate the electrical service properly, mark it so that everybody knows that it's out of service. They then have to tear the pump apart, diagnose the problem, put the pump together, bring it back into the wet well, and put it back into the wet well. That's all timed. Then there's a laboratory event where they have to review pH, alkalinity, and ammonia readings using instruments in order to properly diagnose an issue of having enough alkalinity in the wastewater to effectively achieve nitrification in the treatment process. So they have to go through that. A lot of math, some science to it. And then there's a safety event where they have to actually access a confined space. So they have to have all their procedures set up for confined space, enter the confined space. There's an injured person in the confined space, so they have to do their air measurements to make sure there's enough oxygen. It's a safe environment. They have to then rescue the person that's in the confined space, get them extracted out. And then there's still the equipment, a valve that has to be repaired, and they have to properly repair that valve and then exit the confined space. And that's timed. And the last event is a process control event where they're split into two different groups, and then one group is given a written test, again timed, and then there's another group that has to solve a complex process control problem at the wastewater treatment plant. So they have to work through the math and do their troubleshooting to figure out what happened and how to fix it. So this lasts a few days over the conference. Different events, different times, different teams competing. And our folks achieve first place by having the highest overall score in the event. So what this demonstrates is their ability to deal with wastewater issues, both in the field in terms of the collection system, and then also with the plants, where they can properly diagnose problems at the plants. So it's a phenomenal achievement, and greatly appreciate your efforts and your commitment to our citizens. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Then we have, there's a couple side events that they undergo, just a couple real skill events to demonstrate who's the fastest at what. So we have two winners. We have, Paul Walther is the fastest hole saw cut in North Carolina. So he is properly recognized for that. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
And then we have Matt Hargit, who is the fastest hand cut saw in North Carolina. So congratulations. And lastly, I'd like to recognize Jonathan Smith. John, if you could come up, please. This is really special recognition because this is the first year, as I mentioned, that they've done Hydrant Hysteria. And John volunteered for a committee or was volunteered for a committee. I'm not sure how that worked. But when he got to the group, they said, oh, you have a project, and you have to put together this Hydrant Hysteria event for the conference. And this hasn't been done in North Carolina for years. So John had to figure out how to do this, and he started, nobody in North Carolina really had much experience with this recently. So he had to research this, and he had to go to the national people at the national level to understand what the event was all about, and then researched how to set this up, get a sponsor so he could get the equipment. And then he simply had to broadcast this out to different utilities to get interest in actually competing in the event. And he wound up getting six utilities to compete in the event, and that included two women's teams. So John did a remarkable job putting that together, and I wanted to publicly thank you for doing that.
For sure.
I think in conclusion, what I'll say is, what these folks did is not just indicative of what they personally can do or do as a small team, it's really indicative of what our staff does every day out in the county, serving our citizens. I mean, they do this constantly. These competitions merely demonstrate their skill set under a controlled environment. But I'll tell you that every day, they're out there doing this for all the people that we serve, all of our customers. And I'd just like to leave you with that thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. And I'll just echo that thought. I think about a day like Saturday, if anybody was outside on Saturday, how cold and wet and damp. And often I see this team out there working, whether it's a broken water line or whatever it might be. And if you don't think you're appreciated, let me let you know. You certainly are, and we appreciate what you do so much. We have a list of service award recipients that we want to recognize as well, and we'll start with Courtney Crower with Community Support and Outreach, who has five years tenure, James King in Planning with five years, Caitlin Robillard, William Summy, and Amanda Weatherman, all with five years with the Sheriff's Office, Jennifer Sneed in Human Services Business Ops with five years, Noah Williams, Social Services with five years, Vicky Griffin, Veteran Services with five, Merwin Joiner, Transportation, five years. We have Marion Hogan in the Register of Deeds with 15 years, Barbara Laney in Tax Administration with 20 years. And then we had two December retirements, John Ngani with the Sheriff's Office, 28 years service, and Jeff Crook with our Legal Department, 30 years. So congratulations to all of those folks for their service.
Kristal.
I realize I did, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry.
We also have a little special recognition for Kristal Gillyard, our Register of Deeds, who also has 15 years of service. I want to ask her to come up and have a little presentation. I've never been one, but I know Register of Deeds, you've got to do a tough job. You've done a fantastic job throughout the years, serving the citizens, and certainly through your elected positions. That speaks well to you this year, that you have 15 years tenure. So congratulations on your work for Citizens Union County.
Thank you.
Next item. Next item is our informal comments. Before we do that, they'll have one other recognition, and we always like to take the opportunity for the guy that fell on a sword last year. Commissioner Richard Helms, would you step up here?
On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, staff, and the Citizens Union County, thank you for your service as Chairman last year. You did a fantastic job, and we congratulate you.
Thank you, sir.
So a couple of steps back to get you in front of the sign.
All right. Now, with regard to our informal comments, we had no one sign up to speak, and so we will move to our additions, deletions, and adoption of the agenda. Commissioner Rushing.
Yes, can we move item number 21?
Okay. Okay, we'll make, we'll put that first item under Old Business, 25A.
Motion to approve is admitted.
Have a motion and a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve consent? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed. Takes us to item 25A. Commissioner Rushing, Old Business.
Okay. May I just a question for Jeff Yates. Can you explain this a little bit about the payment officer that we, how's this work?
Sure. Mr. Chairman Commissioners, if I understand the correct, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the whole question walking up, but...
Yeah, why are we doing this other than to say, what, we're saving $7,556?
Yes, sir. What we do constantly with our debt portfolio is we're constantly reviewing opportunities in the market as well as opportunities for early redemption. And what we have in this case is an opportunity to redeem our debt early. And basically, that means paying off our debt with our cash. So what we're doing is taking investments which are earning about 1% in the bank and using that to redeem debt that's costing us about 4% in interest. So this early redemption, as you mentioned, will save us about $7.5 million and will free up capacity as part of your water plan going forward.
Why did, why is it now that they're doing it?
When you have debt, there become certain points in the debt's lifespan where that's callable. So this is based on our review of our portfolio, of our debt portfolio, it was advantageous at this time to do this early debt redemption.
Okay, it talks about bond ratios and some ratios. Is there a point where it becomes harder to borrow, or is there any effect that is on other things that we borrow? I know our credit rating is very solid. So is there an effect, like, for example, if we did a different type of bond, would that have an effect on the credit ratio that affects public works, or is that just revenue bond? It's completely separate from everything else?
The revenue bonds are completely separate because difference between revenue and GO bonds, GO bonds are tax-backed. These are revenue bonds paid for by the ratepayers of the utility. And the metrics that are primarily used, what's referred to as a coverage ratio, which means the amount of revenue taken in by the utility as opposed to its debt, and then also an additional bonds test, which is a measure of your total ability to pay debt. These redemptions help those ratios and improve those going into the future. So what this does is gives us capacity to carry out the capital improvement program that's been adopted by the Board.
How much cash do we have on hand right now?
Right now, there's about $126 million, $25 million of cash in the utility.
Thank you. Mr. Yates, would you clarify the $126 million worth? How much of that is allocated and how much of that is unallocated?
Sure. Of that, you have your 365-day operating reserve, which is about 50, 55 million. A large chunk of that then is committed to projects, is appropriated to projects, and then the remainder of that is available or is being, is committed to use for this debt redemption, which is about 38 million. So there's about a million to a million and a half of unallocated fund balance in the utility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize Financial Service Administration CFO to sign documents for early redemption of the 2009 variable rate revenue bonds and associated variable rate derivative swap 2011A revenue bonds and 2007 state revolving loan for an effective date of February 3rd, 2020, and adopt the budget amendment number four.
Okay, we have a motion. Does the motion?
Question, please.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, was this also, was this, were we capable of doing this without the next year's 33% increase? Or the increase is going to be 33% over the next 13 months?
This is unrelated to the increase. As mentioned in the motion, this terminates an outstanding swap that the county has in place. So this eliminates the last piece of variable rate debt the county's holding in its portfolio. So this is independent of the budget actions that the Board took, I believe it was a couple of weeks ago. This is part of, this is not related to that.
Okay, so why would we have not just done this? Is it not going to help, or would it help you be used to do a decrease?
It will help the utility. It facilitates the rate plan that's in place. But we've been working on this since the summer to bring, to bring forward to the Board.
So even with this $7.5 million savings, we can't offset the rate increase?
No, sir. This is, it's over the life of the debt. So that's the present value savings over the, over the remaining life, which in some cases is five years. It just depends. There's several pieces of debt in there. So this is an independent move to save the utility the money.
Is that motion sufficient? Yep, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Takes us to New Business, item 26, the appointments of Commissioners to Boards and Committees. Members of the Board, I have, you have a list of the current committees, and we need to go over those to ensure our assignments. Ag Advisory Board, Chairman Jerry Simpson, I'll be happy to continue. Katava River Water Supply Project, myself and Commissioner Helms.
Yes, sir.
Central Line Council of Governments, Commissioner Aikmas.
Yes, sir. That's fine.
Central Line Council of Governments, I thought you wanted to be an alternate and...
If someone wants to take that role, I'll be happy to serve as alternate.
Okay, I'll do that one. How about the Central Economic Development Commission?
Happy to continue.
Good deal. Economic Development Advisory Board?
Happy to continue.
Fire Commission, Chairman Ray.
Yes.
Human Services, Commissioner Helms.
Yes, sir.
Job Ready Partnership Council, Commissioner Ray.
Yes, sir.
JCPC, Commissioner Rushing.
I'll have to keep that.
Library Board Trustees, Commissioner Ray.
Yes.
Local Emergency Planning Committee, Commissioner Helms.
Yes, sir.
CARPO, MPO, Chairman Helms and...
I asked, did someone else take that this year?
Okay. Mr. Ray, you willing to do that?
I think I got a full bucket. I will, I will attempt. I will do it.
Okay. Having said that, we'll accept you in that position. And Commissioner Aikmas, you want to continue as the alternate there?
I will.
Could I ask that somebody take the Library Board?
Be happy to.
Okay. Parks and Rec, Commissioner Rushing?
Happy to continue.
RPO, Rocky River, Commissioner Aikmas?
I'd like to ask Commissioner Rushing if he'd take that.
I'd be glad to do that.
Thank you.
And an alternate?
I'll serve as the alternate.
Okay. School Liaison, I spoke to Ms. Tintell today. It's her understanding that the Chair and the Vice Chair have been serving in that role.
Well, me.
South Piedmont Community College Board, Commissioner Aikmas.
Happy to continue.
Transportation Advisory Board, Commissioner Aikmas.
Happy to continue.
And Yadkin River Water Supply Project, Commissioner Simpson, and Commissioner Rushing.
I'd be glad to look at my position on that, do my position to Yadkin Project.
Okay.
Chairman, I'd be happy to fill that.
Okay. Anybody else interested in that? Okay. Commissioner Helms, I think that would work. You serve on the Katava, so there's a lot of similar information. Yeah. All right. Motion to approve as recommended. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very much. Takes us to County Manager Comments. Mr. Watson.
Mr. Chair, couple of items. One, if you have not had the opportunity to go by the Old Sears location at the Monroe Mall and to volunteer or at least walk through and see the Union County Christmas Bureau operation, I would highly encourage anyone to stop by there and take a look at what's going on there. We do have, we do continue to have some needs. I will tell you that right now Gloria Haney, who's with the Department of Human Services, and her volunteers have put together Christmas for 1,700 children in Union County. That is phenomenal, but we still have some needs. We are still in need of food donations. We are still in need of food donations, and we are still in need of items for stockings for young children. Gloria tells me that they've never not hit their quota or have their needs not met, but as of today, those are some needs that we have before the distribution begins on Wednesday. So, right now, this afternoon, if you go over there, that Sears building will be completely full from one end to the other, all the floor space packed. By Friday afternoon, it will be completely empty. It is just a phenomenal thing to see. And again, Gloria Haney has done a fantastic job, continues to do a fantastic job. I told her over the weekend, I just don't, I don't know how she does what she does. But she, she has a method, and she makes it happen, and we should all be grateful for it. A couple of things, also, other, other things. One, we just completed a second O-Factor Trust Survey as a follow-up to a survey that we had done in the spring on, on the topics of trust. And I'm happy to report that we have seen improvement across our organization in all areas of trust. We actually, our survey scores are better than the benchmark scores and other organizations, and we have improved our score since the spring. We do have two items that continue to be opportunities, and that is in the area of investment, how we, how we as an organization invest in our employees and how we as employees invest in each other. And those are two completely different things, but that is, that is all-inclusive in the area of investment. The other is in the area of stress. And as I point out to employees in local government and this kind of work, we have unique responsibilities to serve the residents of our county. A lot of the jobs that we do every day cannot be done by anybody else. There are high expectations for those jobs. We have, go through a lot of training and certification processes to be able to do those jobs. And at times, it does get stressful because we all want to do good work. So, there's still some areas in, that we have to work on in terms of stress. And as Andy was pointing out, with all of the folks that had won the awards in the competition, you know, those, and that's a real, that's, that's, that's a real example of stress on the job. Those individuals that were in here earlier do that work every day. And doing things like competing like they did makes them better at their jobs. I think that it, nobody could argue with the fact that if you have a sewer line break or a water line break, you want the, the very best teams in the state of North Carolina out there working on your problem. And we have that, but that does create stress because we do have high expectations. But also, I would be remiss if I didn't mention this, it helps us keep those employees safe on the job. When, when they practice these things, you know, when you're around high voltage on those big electric pumps and you're pulling the power on those things and making those disconnects and pulling those motors apart and then wiring those things back up and putting them back in the wet well, you know, you do not want to touch the wrong thing. And when they can practice it and they can be as proficient as our teams have demonstrated that they are, it improves on-the-job safety for everybody. So, I want to add my voice to that, Andy, and say congratulations to everybody on the work that y'all do day in, day out basis. With that, I would wish everyone a Merry Christmas. I hope that you enjoy the holiday with your family and are able to take some time off to recharge your batteries, because when we come back after, after the first of the year, there's a lot of work left to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aikmas?
Yep, just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, hope it's a great season for you and your family.
Commissioner Rushing?
Same, just wish everybody a Merry Christmas, hope you have a safe holiday and a Happy New Year.
Commissioner Helms?
I'd like to make a comment about an opportunity I had this past week. Parks and Rec invited us to their Christmas luncheon. I want to thank you personally for that. That is one great group of employees that we all should be proud of and appreciate the leadership y'all provide. I do have a, I do have a question for Andy, and that is, if I recall, last year, they walked away with the trophies too. Are we going to have to build a room to keep all those trophies for what they keep achieving? It's not a bad thing, I guess we have to. But I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, enjoy your family, and we'll look forward to working with you after the first of the year.
Mr. Ray?
Merry Christmas to all the employees. Thank you for what you do, law enforcement too. Y'all are part of the family. Fire EMT, see you after the first of the year.
Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Above all, be safe, and we'll see you in 2020. Motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.